My opening up the meeting and getting us started.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that? You'll have to call your portion of the meeting to order and call your roll call. And then I'll call my portion of the meeting together and call our roll call for Bloomington and off we'll go.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order of the 21st of April, 2021, and it is a joint council meeting between the city councils of Bloomington and Richfield to talk about the Congress of New Urbanism Legacy Project. And then I will ask Assistant Director Melissa Palman to please call roll call on the Richfield side.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Supple?
Here.
Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Wayland?
Here.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call this Bloomington portion of this meeting to order, call the order of the Bloomington City Council. Again, it's the City Council Special Meeting on Wednesday, April 21st with the Richfield City Council. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the Bloomington City Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Jack Beloga? Councilmember Jenna Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Nathan Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Dwayne Loman? Councilmember Patrick Martin?
I'm here.
Councilmember Sean Nelson? And Mayor Tim Bussie?
Present. At the record show, we've got four of the seven members of the City Council here, absent Councilmembers Loman, Beloga, and Nelson. At the time, at this moment, if they show up, we'll certainly log them in as they come on board. So we are here this evening to talk about the Portland Legacy Project from the, an informational update on the Portland Legacy Project. And we have, this was something we talked about and got a bit derailed by a little something called COVID. And we, it's disappointing because I know we had big plans for this, and I think there was going to be a lot of great hands-on, very intense public engagement on all this. Frankly, I was very excited and was disappointed when this was one of the things that had to get kind of backburnered as, as the, as the pandemic raged. Glad to see we're back at it and glad to see that we've done whatever has been possible in terms of public engagement and look forward to continuing that as we, as we continue to move forward.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I can take, take it from here with a few opening remarks if you, unless you have anything else to say.
I have nothing else to say. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, anything to add?
No, take it away.
Very good. Julie, go ahead, please.
Sure. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Julie Farnham, Senior Planner with the City of Bloomington. And first off, I want to thank you all for joining us here tonight. I know you all have very busy meeting schedules, and this is outside of your regular schedule, so we really appreciate you coming together tonight. This project was conceived as a partnership between our two cities, and so we thought it was really important to offer an opportunity for a dialogue and a shared discussion around the draft recommendations prior to finalizing them. The consultant will be, that'll be really the heart of the consultant's presentation. Before turning it over to them, though, I did just want to talk briefly about what these CNU, Congress for New Urbanism Legacy Projects, are. As the mayor noted, they're typically focused around an intensive, generally a week-long design workshop with a lot of stakeholder and community engagement. They result in plans that offer a lot of fresh ideas and high-level guidance and recommendations. They aren't rooted in a lot of deep analysis like a more traditional planning study. So I just wanted to set that as expectation context. And as was also noted, unfortunately, we were all teed up and ready to go with our workshop last March, and it did have to get postponed. At that point in time, a lot of really great work had been done that we wanted to bring to fruition, and we had really hoped that we might be able to have that community workshop in the fall. Of course, that did not happen. So early this year, we decided to proceed using virtual methods, and so the consultant will also go through all of that that we did. So those are my initial remarks, and I will turn it over to my counterpart in Richfield for a few other remarks. So again, thank you all for joining us here tonight. Melissa? Thanks, Julie. I'm Melissa Palman. I'm with the City of Richfield's Community Development Department. I don't want to take up a lot of time. I just wanted to say that staff in Bloomington and Richfield frequently collaborate on issues of code or things that our HRAs are doing. We talk more about our programs, but this was a really exciting opportunity for us to talk about a way to really knit our communities together across this really large physical barrier of 494. So this has been exciting to get to work with your planning staff in this capacity. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah McCully and Tom Walsh to take it away with their presentation.
Thank you so much. I am Tom Walsh with TSW in Atlanta. And Sarah and I have two pair of mukluks for, we can sell anybody for free. We thought we were going to have to use them, but we came up and never got to. So I don't even know how to put them on. But we, we really did enjoy our trip, and I'm glad both Sarah and I were able to make it up there before COVID shut the project down because it gave us the ability to at least travel around and understand the geographic area so we could take the project as far. So this is a presentation for the Congress of New Urbanism 2020 Legacy Project Red. I think we're the first one to tee this up of the four that were going to be presented in the CNU last year, so we're excited about that. And it's been a joint venture between TSW Tool Design for this. So you want to go to the next slide, Sarah? So again, I'm Tom Walsh. Sarah McCully is going to make the bulk of the presentation. And then we have also Ian and Sierra who are tool design, and I think Ian is going to talk on, on his part when we get to it. But I want to make a special thanks to Sarah McCully because she has done the bulk of the work, I'd say 95% of it, and really has put a Yoma's job, and we're very proud of her at her office for all the work, hard work that she's done to get it to this stage. So with that, I'm going to, oh, I have one more slide to go, I'm sorry, and then I'm going to talk later on. Next slide, please. So tonight's agenda is the project purpose, the existing condition summary. Again, that, that was so good. We were able to see your area of what we've heard from you over the last few months. We were able to have some, some input from the community, which is so important. Some of the recommendations based on that and some of our dialogue with both municipalities, this is what we think where we should go. And then let's talk about the next steps at the end of this. So Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, Tom, and good evening, everyone. I, we appreciate your time tonight, and we're excited to present what we've done so far. Just a general purpose of the Legacy Project was to help create a gateway by, that could serve both cities, and as Melissa said, kind of knit them together. We really wanted to be able to serve community needs through that and revitalize some aging commercial centers, but also really focus on the connectivity in the public realm in this area. So as Julie and Melissa noted, the, the scope of this project changed over time. We were originally going to do some design work, but now because of COVID and then some of the advancement of the MINDOT plans, we've kind of changed around our scope, and we're coming up with overall design standards for the public realm like streetscapes, mid-block crossings, and public spaces. We're documenting our alternative conceptual design for the 494 interchange, which Ian will talk about in a little bit. And then we're providing action items for the cities to start making things easier for redevelopment and get some of this public realm improvements done. I'll just run through the existing conditions pretty quickly because we, we do want to focus on the recommendations, but we're looking here mainly at Portland Avenue, about a mile and a half from the airport and the Mall of America. And just zooming in here a little bit more, we're bound basically by Nicollet and 12th, and then approximately 76th to 80th, north to south. And we were originally focusing only here, but we've kind of expanded since we're talking about larger design standard-type ideas. We expanded to a larger walkability and streetscape zone within, within that area. So we haven't started from scratch. We've reviewed a bunch of plans in both cities to kind of give us an understanding of what's going on and to find relevant recommendations that are similar or relevant to this area. This map shows some of the community resources, which we define primarily as parks, places of worship, people, places people want to go, and then some of the bike facilities and major routes for pedestrians and cyclists. And then the connectivity map goes a little deeper with those routes and starts to show the planned and existing routes for all modes of transportation, the key here being the, the interchanges, and then this planned Metro Transit BRT route that's going to come right through the middle of the site with two stations along American and one up on Portland around 77th. And then the, the other main thing being that interchange redesign and the closure of the other two. And Ian will talk in a few minutes about an idea that we came up with that we think is important to consider. The main thing with the zoning maps that we wanted to show is just kind of the difference between Richfield and Bloomington. The main thing with Richfield is that the zoning today already supports a mixed-use environment, whereas the zoning in Bloomington does not because many, particularly the B2 district does not allow residential, so it's a lot more commercial-focused rather than mixed-use. One of the other maps that we did was a susceptibility to change, which is where we look at land value as opposed to the building value to see which parcels may be susceptible to change in the future because the land value is higher than the use that's on it. So we just kind of use this as a starting point for understanding what could happen in the future. So I'll go through some of the public engagement. We did visit back in 2019 before the world changed, and we had this whole great plan. And, you know, the pandemic hit and that all went up in the air. So we halted for a while, came up with that MINDOT idea somewhere in the middle of 2020, and had a meeting with, meeting or two with them. And then we actually really restarted the public process in early 2021. And now we're at the final part where we're finalizing the report document and giving this presentation to you. So our, restarted the public engagement was some stakeholder interviews. We met in February with some property owners, business owners, developers, and other agencies that partner in the area, MINDOT, Metro Transit, and then both cities with some city staff. A lot of the common themes were that we need to improve the public realm and the walkability, the bikeability. Housing could be a lot more successful than commercial just because of the changing world we're in that's been accelerated by the pandemic. And that, you know, there is some notion that some of those public realm improvements could add some cost burden to property owners, and we need to be cognizant of that. And then we held our public meeting on February 24th via Zoom. We had some poll questions. We presented some of our initial ideas. We had about 45 people, and the main things that came out of that were walkability and bikeability and the connectivity and making sure that's safe. And then kind of just bringing up some of the aesthetics of the area with parks and open space and some building design standards. And then that night, we launched our online engagement, which was open for four weeks. We had 38 participants on that. We had an interactive map and then three surveys. One was a general one. One was directed to business owners and one was directed to property owners. And this map here just shows where people left their comments. Main things, again, were making sure we have affordable housing. And really, there were a lot of comments about preserving the existing businesses in the area, both because people enjoy going to them, and then they also recognize that they're smaller businesses, and they want to make sure that they can stay. So, and then the other major, major thing that came out of that engagement was the walkability and bikeability crossing 494, making that easier. There were a few comments about people visiting the Walmart and meeting or getting their groceries and just making sure that that's safe. So really driving home that point that walkability and bikeability and preserving the existing businesses were really coming out on top for the public engagement. So I'll hand it to Tom to talk about some place-making ideas. I think. Hey, Tom, you're on mute.
Since we weren't allowed to come for the five, five-day workshop, it really, we decided we wanted to show you some, maybe some examples of what other places that have done successfully that are somewhat similar to yours. So the next slide is, this slide is in Alpharetta, a project that we worked on. And I think what you'll notice is that there's a lot of parking, a lot of, lot of major roads coming through, very wide roads. It wasn't, it wasn't pedestrian-friendly. Businesses were starting there on, on the north-south side. I don't, my, I don't think my framework, so you go up and down, Sarah, on, on this north-south, there, there are businesses, but you had to go up to the end of the street and cross. There are no mid-block crossings and so forth. So go to the next line. So there's, there's a wide right-of-way. There are irregular streets, long distance between the crossings and unsafe pedestrian crossings. So we were able to do a shred. We did, we actually did a master plan for this area, looked at the street, and this is what is, five years later, look what it turned out to be. The city hall ended up going there. It's the exact same imagery you just saw. Residential mixed-use buildings. There's a mid-block crossing, usable public spaces. That's, that's become the public green for the city. It's reduced the crossing distances and so forth. And we still, we still had lots of cars coming through, so we had to navigate that, but we were able to get more pedestrian shed areas. So go to the next slide and they'll show that. So this is the mid-block crossing. There was nothing there at the time. So a pedestrian can come up, push that button, and then it stops the traffic and allows the pedestrian to have the right-of-way to go across the street. These are all going all through Atlanta. These are spectacular. I hope you all have those up in the Minneapolis area. I hope you have some of these because they really work, work well and give the pedestrian some solace. But you saw the buildings were all brought up to the front of the street. So it's, it's turned out to be spectacular, successful with lots of mixed use. Next line. I think this is the most important piece of the whole project is the bridge that connects the two communities. And this was a project at Georgia Tech that was done many years ago. But at, at the time, the, there, Georgia Tech was on the west side of this, this picture. Now, on the east side, there was really industrial-type stuff, and then the, the university came and bought that area. And so there's all this new buildings and classrooms, but they had to focus on that bridge. And now they cross to be safe. So, next line. So you can see that it, it was unpleasant to cross and so forth. So go ahead to the next one. And, and look at the width of the interstate below there. We're much wider than what you have on your current project. This is, there's about 12 lanes or maybe more, maybe 14 lanes. So what they did was they extended the sides of the bridge where there's a green parklet on the north side. And then on the, on the south side, there's more landscaping and green. There's a bike lanes, protective bike lanes as well as the car. So the, the car's there, but you don't feel like you're on a bridge, and you feel like the two areas are connected together. Next line. So, so this is what that says, you get a wider bridge. So this is the, the bike lanes on both sides, the usable space, the wide sidewalks and the street lighting. All of that contributes to make much more of a friendly urban environment that I hope you all can insist on doing that. They should do that, especially if you were to go with Ian's ideas because Ian's ideas are going to save, but save the DOT money in the first place. So why not take some of that money that you save and put it into these refinements? So it benefits both, both, both communities. Next line.
So we came up with a series of five goals and then corresponding principles. I'll just read through the five major goals. They, they are kind of what the recommendations are organized around, and so they'll relate directly back. The first one was to create a mixed-use gateway that establishes a sense of identity. The second one was to provide redevelopment alternatives for aging commercial strip centers. The third one was to preserve and provide affordable housing. Fourth one was to improve mobility access for all modes of transportation. And the fifth one was to enhance parks' open space in the public realm. So this is just a reminder of how, how those things are going to be organized. Our recommendations will be organized with the design standards, the 494 documentation, and then our action items. And just, you know, the key thing here will be balancing those standards and some of the things we're recommending with the feasibility and community values. But there are things, you know, as we all know, city policies and initiatives can help offset some of those financial impacts that could prevent redevelopment from happening, happening, and we'll go through some of those in a little bit. But the general framework for the recommendations really does focus on that public realm. We're looking at key movement corridors to preserve for pedestrians and cyclists, particularly if this interchange goes in as planned. So we're looking at streetscape standards and pedestrian bridge design that really relate back to that Fifth Street Bridge Tom just went through, having intersections be safer for pedestrians to cross with longer crossing times and lead time for them to go out there, and then mid-block crossings, and then some public space recommendations. So now I'll hand it to Ian to talk through this.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. So we had the pleasure of looking at the interchanges, and I know you're trying to make a nice gateway and a beautiful public realm and a walk-up environment. And like Tom said, it would be great if you could do something like they did between Georgia Tech and Midtown. However, that was just a bridge. You have a bridge and an interchange all coming together at Portland. And so we need to do as much as we can to ameliorate that, the effects of the interchange so you can have this sort of the quality of space that you want. So this is a kind of a cartoon of the existing situation. And the, it's color-coded, so the yellow is the highway lanes, the white is regular streets. The pink are ramps and the blue are frontage lanes. And so presently, there's half, half an interchange at Portland, a full interchange at Nicollet. And what's, what we're proposing is on the next slide. We're proposing to, to, to do what's called a split diamond interchange. Right now, the Department of Transportation is looking at bringing all four ramps up to Portland Avenue. And if that happens, it will put a lot of pressure on Portland Avenue and intersections like American Boulevard and 77th Street. So what we're proposing is to pull the ramps to the east and to the west. So on the east side, we're proposing to pull the ramps up to Chicago Street. And on the west side, we're proposing to pull the ramps over to Second. And what this does is it distributes the traffic on more than just Portland Avenue. So some trips can use Second, Fourth, Fifth and Chicago, which takes the pressure off of Portland, Portland and the intersections nearby. So the, some of the benefits are, is less right-of-way is needed for the interchange and for the lanes on Portland. So that can be used for trees and walking environments and, and cycle paths. It's more pedestrian-friendly. It's more of a human scale than you would have otherwise. It also increases resilience. If there's a crash, you have other routing options. And then it just makes it more humane, human pedestrian-scale space. So those are our, our suggestions. And we, we first shared these ideas about a year ago, and we're hoping that they get considered in the environmental assessment because of all the community advantages that this type of interchange creates. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ian. So I'll go through some of the overarching action items. We have a larger list with more details in the report, but we're looking at just kind of the, the bigger ones for each set of goals. So the first two, we grouped the first two goals together. And the main ones we have so far are rezoning the Bloomington parcels that are B2 to B4 to allow that residential use to explore funding opportunities with county and state sources to assemble land as it becomes available so that there could be larger redevelopment sites that could build the mixed-use development, ensure MINDOT provides usable public spaces on remnant parcels. So if the interchange goes in as planned and those parcels are no longer usable for redevelopment, making sure those are quality spaces to use. And then the, the other two are to work in partnerships with the HRAs, the land trusts, the county, Metro Transit, much as the same as you already do, but just continue maybe putting some of that effort in the, in the Portland area and then helping existing businesses either stay in place or relocate as, as needed. The, the next ones are for the affordable housing. We want to encourage developers to exceed those inclusionary zoning requirements in the policies. And I know that there are different requirements between each city, so we're making sure that we're trying to capture the ideas just in case one city has policies in place and the other one does not. And the second one is preserving the naturally occurring affordable housing, both multifamily and single-family, creating an equity scorecard for redevelopment to reevaluate, to evaluate projects to make sure there aren't too many impacts to low-income or minority residents. And then consider modifying the adjacent single-family, single zoning districts for an increase in density around transit by allowing smaller multifamily buildings like duplexes, triplexes, or quadplexes. In terms of improving the mobility access, a lot of it is coordinating with MINDOT for, especially within detailed design to see about, you know, how that'll change with travel, travel patterns that may permanently change because of the pandemic and, and working from home for many companies, coordinating with them about community compensation, and then creating an equity scorecard again to evaluate transportation and mobility projects for the same thing. And then keeping those movement corridors we have identified on the framework plan and allowing pedestrians and cyclists extra crossing time and just really making sure if, if the interchange goes in as MINDOT has planned, that there are alternative ways that don't get forgotten. And then the fifth one with the parks and open space. One of the projects is removing the sound wall at Roosevelt Park just to make it a little more welcoming to, to come into the park, adding small public spaces along the trail in the Excel Utility Corridor, South of American, and widening that trail to make it a lot more apparent and adding some signage to direct people to Smith Park or up to the BRT once that's built. Build open spaces that include community gardens or urban agriculture, and then making sure that we design stormwater management in ways that can serve multiple purposes or as usable open space. So we'll go into some of the design standards here with the streets, which Tool Design worked on. Main thing here is just reducing the lane width for vehicle lanes to not only slow down the traffic, but also reduce the amount of space that pedestrians and bicyclists have to cross. And then that also allows more room for sidewalks. And, you know, some of your streets, standards, standards might already have some of this stuff in place, but just making sure that some of these minimums are, are more pedestrian-oriented. And then with mid-block crossings and intersections, giving the pedestrians lead time, making sure there's refuge medians and, you know, either the rapid flashing beacons or the hybrid beacons at the mid-block crossings to make those easier to use. And that just gives more routes so that people don't need to go all the way down to a really faraway intersection to get to where they need to go. And then when there is space on the bridges or the interchanges that are, that are going on, you know, Nicollet, 12th, or Portland, just using that space for pedestrians and cyclists and making sure that there's effective barriers in place for the fast traffic as they're coming off the interstate so that people feel safer. I think the sidewalks now are pretty narrow and very close to the vehicle lanes, so it can feel a little scary as you're walking. And then we, we came up with a concept for pedestrian bridges, kind of off of that Fifth Street Bridge idea for Chicago and Second, where we have the planting area, a wide path, and then maybe some seeding, just making it a more pleasant environment to go over the interstate rather than trying to cross a bunch of lanes coming in from 494. And then just the key is to make ADA accessible and the streets around them ADA accessible as well. And then just the key is to make ADA accessible and the streets around them ADA accessible as well. And then finally, with public spaces, we'll have more detailed ideas in the report with this. But the main thing is just making sure that if there is that leftover space, it's used thoughtfully and could be integrated into future redevelopment that could happen in the future. These are just showing some examples of, you know, one acre or less spaces where, you know, you have some of those community areas and even just a lawn that addresses stormwater management. And that way, you don't have a detention pond that's just fenced and gated. But just thinking differently about the public spaces that would go around the interstate. And then, you know, with the trails, just the signage and, you know, the basic stuff we were talking about earlier. But just letting people know where they are and where they can go. We prioritized some of our action items, the top five, that I think, you know, City of Richfield and Bloomington could get started on right away is proactively rezoning those properties in Bloomington. Starting to identify where land acquisition opportunities are and maybe priorities if they go for sale in the future. And then establish those partnerships for affordable housing and commercial development and work with the HRAs for that. Coordinate with MINDOT for the community benefits and evaluation and detailed design. And, you know, just keep showing the concept and different ideas and making sure the community is taken care of. Help existing businesses at risk of displacement. And then kind of think through those design standards we're recommending for the streetscapes and the public spaces. So the next steps would be after we finish the report, we have acceptance or adoption from both cities, depending on what you choose to do. And that should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. And that's what we had. So if there are any questions, we can answer them.
Speaking of the Bloomington City Council and probably to Richfield also, it's hard to see everybody. So I don't know that we're going to see virtual or digital hands up. So I think if you have a question, I know this group is not shy. So just kind of chime in if you have a question and we can move this along.
So I can jump in with, I did have a question in the chat, which Julie answered, but I just want to be clear. So when you say no bridge at Second Avenue in Chicago, you're not saying don't have the pedestrian bridges that were planned as part of the MINDOT project? You're just saying no new vehicular bridge?
So right now, a bridge for motorists is not feasible at Second because of elevations. But yeah, pedestrian bridges, something like that would be fine.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely would like to hear more about the idea of splitting up the interchange. It's out of the box. I've never thought about it until you suggested it tonight, but it seems interesting. My main concern on the Richfield side of things is just that we've, there are so many great ideas and we've designated almost no space for them to happen. And most of that space is so close to this MINDOT interchange where they're not going to allow any curb cuts. So actually, could you maybe go back to the one where it highlights the like red redevelopment zone was one of your first slides? Yeah, either of these will work. So it's just like the Richfield, yeah, any of these is fine. So the Richfield side has these like itty-bitty like half blocks. We've got the nursing home that isn't going to move in the block east of it. MINDOT's saying like no curb cuts anywhere in that block of Portland. So we basically have like a block and a half where we're supposed to create a sense of place and like vibrant new mixed-use development. And I just don't know, it just doesn't seem like there's enough space to do anything. And my hope would be that we as Richfield would consider that 7,600 block of Portland opposite the park as potential future redevelopment as property owners were interested. And do more than just upzoning for duplexes, but allow an apartment building or something more substantial to exist on that block. That would be consistent with what we did at Lyndale Avenue. It's consistent with the scale of use at Penn Avenue in the same location. It seems appropriate because if we're going to commit to all these great ideas and have this great framework, we need space for that stuff to happen. And I just don't think this is enough space, but I agree with all the principles and the general ideas that have been presented.
So one of the benefits of what we call approximate interchanges, where the ramps are approximate to Portland but not right on it, is that they give routing options. So and with the frontage lanes, you can access streets like Second, Fourth, and Fifth in Chicago to get the businesses. So the proposals by MINDOT right now actually reduces access to businesses. And what we're trying to do is get a better balance and actually provide more access to the businesses. And it also helps, it also helps traffic as well. Because with the putting all the ramps into one spot, you have to have sort of perfect information about where everyone's going. And if there's any mistake, you get problems. And this has a little more flex and allows for a little bit more of an equilibrium to take place that happens in cities during AMP car, PNP car, and that kind of thing. So a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more options for people.
Okay. And just one comment, since we're probably going to have to move to new people and this will be my only shot. The layout that Richfield saw, and I assume Bloomington has seen for Portland as it currently stands, if they're not willing to consider the split ramp, it's unacceptable. If we want to build these things, we need it to be narrower by any means necessary, including accepting longer queues. So I am hopeful that Richfield and Bloomington can be united, that we need fewer turn lanes. We need less space devoted to that road, no matter what version of the interchange happens. Because we want it to be a good land use. It can't just be a big sewer for cars.
That's a good point. With the approximate interchange, we're trying to keep the space that's being used for interchange purposes within the current envelope of the frontage lanes that are there today. And by spreading out the loads, we can actually have less lanes on Portland and at some of the key intersections. So the rights-of-way will be smaller with a more distributed network. If you put all the trips into one spot, of course, you have to have more lanes in that spot, and that would be Portland Avenue.
So this council member Supple, and I had a follow-up to that. And that someone that knows the procedures better than I do, is this still something that could come into consideration in the discussion with MINDOT? Because it didn't seem to be that it was one of the options. And I'm just wondering if we still have the option of looking at that split interchange.
Councilmember Supple. I'll jump in in that I think perhaps if the project had not been derailed by COVID, there might have been a better shot for that. I think that at this point, unfortunately, it's really difficult to slow the process down because of the funding cycle with MINDOT and their proposed construction schedule. So, you know, this proposal was very exciting. I know that Richfield was really interested in looking at this. But at this level, it's kind of conceptual. Models haven't been run. It hasn't, it hasn't really fully been vetted. And unfortunately, I think that the reality is that we are out of time.
Okay. It's a little upsetting for the design team though, because they had this a year ago. And they could have included in their EA, and they understood the advantages at that time. And if they didn't, I think a really good alternative was not considered. So they may have to redo part of the EA because of that. And we warned them about delaying their process. So it could, it could create a bit of a problem for them because they didn't include it in the EA, if you're interested in pursuing it.
Yeah, we presented this to them a year ago, in the early stages. That's what bothers me is that they've sort of just ignored it. And it's a detriment to you all. I mean, it's really going to be really bad. It's not, it's not that it's going to be okay. It's going to be really bad.
We actually had this discussion about what would happen if they didn't include it. And so here we are, and they haven't. It was, it's really unfortunate that they decided to go with putting all the ramps onto Portland only.
Councilmember Whelan here, I guess I, I don't disagree with the things that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary is concerned about or the overall vision of this proposal. But I guess I must admit, I'm pretty skeptical about it, even if we had the time. Having spent a lot of time, I used to work at House of Prayer Lutheran Church, have spent a lot of time on Chicago Avenue right there. Trying to put an on, or I guess that'd be an off-ramp there. Frankly, it seems like a disaster or would be very disruptive. Those lanes are very narrow and people need to park there for that housing. And having a bunch of traffic coming through housing doesn't make sense to me. I guess if the lanes are being split up, I'm a little confused as to why. I guess I understood most of the 494 plans as being needing to reduce how many areas there are on and off-ramps. And so if we were not going to do that, I'm not sure why we wouldn't keep them on 12th and Niclet like they are now. That at least on the Richfield side, Second is also sort of an awkward space to be having a ton of traffic going through. So I guess I agree with the concern that the current Portland proposal is so wide. But I guess my, my thought to mitigate it would be that adding, I like the idea of the pedestrian bridge that's more than just a six-foot-wide strip of concrete. Having that be park space and look nice and having one at Chicago and improving the one at Second. But I, yeah, I guess I'll stop there. But the whole reconfiguration, even if there was time, to me seems like it doesn't fit in with the character of neighborhoods and concerns me a lot.
So this is Julie Farnham. I do need to just step in a little bit here. Because I know our city engineers have, and working with MINDOT, there was some analysis of the concept proposal presented by the consultant team. And it's my understanding that they came to the conclusion that the numbers didn't work. I don't know all of the details about that, so I can't really speak to it. I do, I don't know, I don't want to leave the expectation that this project is going to change the MINDOT plan. I think this project can advise on that plan and respond to the MINDOT's plan. But I think we have to be very careful. This project was never intended specifically to come up with an interchange design. It was great that we had the opportunity to look at some other options. And I think that we can keep those options as conversation points. But I just don't want people to think that MINDOT hasn't, at least as far as I understand, MINDOT has made a decision about what this interchange, the type of interchange that it would be. And I don't know if any of the city engineers on the call want to add to that. I think you can unmute yourself, but unfortunately, I can't speak with a lot of level of detail about it. But I just, I just want to make sure that everybody here understands that there's a limit to what this project is able to do with regard to MINDOT's plans.
This is Carl Keel. I'm the Public Works Director in Bloomington. And have been kind of tracking the MINDOT project with some detail. Would note that early in the process, there was a whole series of different interchange layouts and configurations that were analyzed by MINDOT. And what I mean by analyze is they did traffic modeling for each of them. They did kind of preliminary geometric layouts, identified right-of-way impacts, drainage impacts, et cetera, et cetera, and safety concerns. And there were several of them that, not exactly the same as this proposal that you see this evening, but very similar. Split interchange configurations. And through their process, they kind of did an analysis of each. In the end, the recommendation was to go with a compressed or a tight diamond, which is the current one at Portland. And I don't know all the details of exactly how, which one was high and what categories. But they looked at a wide range of areas. So I think it is fair to say that this option was looked at in some detail. It was not ignored. And we did get a copy of this, of the kind of sketch that was shown today or this evening. And MINDOT did analyze that. But it did, for a number of reasons, as it went into a little bit more detail, did not work as well as the current proposal. So currently, MINDOT is proceeding with the current interchange at Portland with no interchanges at Niclet or 12th. And I think they have selected that as their preferred alternative.
So to address Ben's thing and what was just said now, yeah, 12th and Niclet didn't work for spacing reasons on the interstate itself. I don't recall them ever looking at Chicago or Second. The other ones are similar, but I could imagine them not working either. And I think, I think what Julie said is interesting because if the numbers didn't work with the option that we're showing, which actually will have less traffic at Portland, I don't know how the numbers work with more traffic at Portland. And then Ben's concern about the character of Chicago, if you look at the sketch, I don't know if you can put the sketch back up, but the westbound off-ramp, it really sends the majority of the traffic to Portland because Portland actually goes north-south. But it does allow the local traffic to use Chicago. And that, and that helps businesses and so forth and people living nearby, because then they don't have to go all the way around the block, you know, up Portland, turning right on 77th and so on. So it just allows a little bit more convenience, a little bit more direct routing. And again, a little more human scale as opposed to putting all the cars into one spot at the same, in the same place. So I'd love to see their analysis that they did. Because, you know, we've been involved in a lot of interchange designs. And frankly, I just, I actually don't buy it at the moment. So I haven't seen it, what they've done, but I just can't imagine it not working better than what they have.
So I just want to bring us back out of the interchange discussion. It is interesting to talk about and everything, but there's a lot more to the recommendations in this plan. And I think that's kind of what we'd like to focus on tonight, the streetscape elements. Because, because again, I think in reality, MINDOT has made this decision. And so maybe we could talk about the other examples for the pet bridges, for the streetscape, for the pedestrian. I'm sorry, the, what word am I looking for? The favoring of the pedestrians, letting them have the advantage at intersections or some of the redevelopment proposals in the area. Maybe we could talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Melissa. And I would, this is Julie, I would also say that if, you know, the MINDOT concept is kind of decided upon, one of the opportunities with that concept is that Niclet and 12th, there's an opportunity there to make those much more pedestrian-friendly. And, you know, I think this is a kind of a picking where we can do the most, get the most benefit for creating that connectivity across the freeway between our two communities, including the design of the pet bridges as well as the redesign of Niclet and 12th. I'm not saying give up on Portland. I'm just saying that let's focus on some of the opportunities here.
If I could just get one more comment in about the interchange, sorry, Melissa. It's just, I am saying it's a weird dynamic of the staff kind of disagreeing with our local staff with the consultants. But I would say if MINDOT did not come to do good land use, if anything, they did to harm our land use, they're not supporting our good land use. So if there's no shot in hell of doing anything better in a big picture with the interchange, it would be really helpful if they could kind of come up with harm reduction ideas based on what MINDOT's current layout is. So maybe it's some of the things you're describing of the pedestrian phasing. Again, like if particular turn lanes or particular areas are problematic, if there are tie-ins that they could do within the context of within the context that's close to where we're at, I would really love to have that because I know it can be better than it was or it currently is.
This is Tim. I'll just weigh in. The, and more generally, the goals and principles that you've laid out, the five goals and principles, I think are, are exactly what needs to happen here. I don't think anybody can argue with any of those that you have laid out and they all make good sense. And the tricky part, of course, the devil is always in the details when we really get into that. The notion of enhancing parks or improving mobility or providing redevelopment alternatives. So I like the, the action items that you have laid out here in the actual to-dos. And I, I think, yes, we could definitely start taking a look here in Bloomington at rezoning those parcels to start the work on that. The funding opportunities. It, it's, um, it's an interesting time in terms of a, a funding world right now with different money from different sources for infrastructure, just generally and specifically what does that mean? Again, the devil would be in the details. So it gives us plenty of options there to work on that. The, the assembly in the land, that is, uh, that's something that we have talked about quite a bit here in Bloomington, more from an affordable housing or an opportunity housing perspective, but certainly it should also be considered from a redevelopment, a broader redevelopment perspective. And then, and it's interesting, just listening to this conversation that's taking place, I, I'll be honest, I didn't realize that there were kind of parallel things going on here as the, as the MnDOT planning was roaring down the track and then this project or this process was underway as well. And to have them, you know, to be so, to, to be so divergent is, it's, I mean, it's, it's disappointing. I think it does, it goes back to the comments that I started with, that we, because when the world changed completely 14 months ago, there wasn't a whole lot that, that could be done. And I think it was, it's disappointing, but I think it's also unfortunately, the realities of what we're looking at, uh, just because of a, of a project of that scale of, of the rebuild of 494, needing to continue to move forward. And to have this, um, this, this wonderful idea that we have here, this wonderful vision, this, this goal, this aspiration for Portland Avenue to, uh, to be kind of a, a wayside for them, because they've got, they have work to do and they've got to get it done. And I, and I understand that. I understand both, both feelings here of frustration. And I'm sure if there are MnDOT folks watching, and I bet there probably are, but they're thinking the same thing because it's not, it, it's just, it's been hard to line up over the past more than a year when, when it's been impossible or, or very hard to do some of the things that we would typically do.
If I can just jump in for another second, I, I think, I, I want everyone to understand that what we did, at least at a staff level, and I, I think Julie will agree, what we did get out of this project was a lot of really great feedback from the neighborhoods on both sides. The businesses and the people that live here who told us how important it is for them to be able to get to the other side of the freeway, the businesses, the houses, and how important it is to be able to get there when you don't have a car or when you are in a wheelchair. And so, um, I think one of the things that came into focus for me is that even if it is not possible to make Portland Avenue perhaps what we originally envisioned, perhaps there is the ability to really focus at 12th and Nicollet and on these pedestrian bridges on ways to really knit these communities back together, to make this more than just a funnel or a transitway or to, to make it a pleasant crossing for people to get to things that they use every day, to get to the grocery store, to get to the restaurant, to fix their car. I think that that's something that both communities can really take away from this and, and look for ways to partner on making those things happen, because it, it would take a partnership, obviously, and some, and some dollars from the communities to do that. I just think that this project really brought into focus how important it is to the people that live there.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And just to build on, on that, uh, a, a little bit is, you know, when we identified this area, we, part of the reason we identified this area was because of the couple of big projects that were going on, that we thought there was a good synergy between, it was an opportunity to get some outside eyes on it. So the, the MnDOT project as well as the D-line project coming right through the heart of this study area. And, um, but we never intended this, this project to be a interchange design study project, but to really kind of try to provide us with some good ideas. And I think that the consultants have done that and, and I don't want to, I really, I really appreciate the work that, that Ian and TSW have, have done to provide some different ideas. And that's not to say that we can't go back to some of those ideas and, and, and use those to push for something higher. I think that that is certainly our hope. But we, we're juggling a lot of, a lot of things here. And I, as Melissa said, I think the key thing in what we heard from the community is making this area more pedestrian-friendly and, and, and making those crossings more pedestrian-friendly. And I, and I think that there's opportunities to do that.
And Mayor Bussey, just real briefly, I, I guess I, I wanted to echo that the thunder got stolen a little bit, which is totally fine. But I, I just want to, a huge thank you to, to staff and to our consulting partners on this. I know when I was, I was maybe three doors into knocking when I ran the first time around and I was talking to somebody from the Bloomington Bicycle Coalition and they said, man, it's nice to ride around town, but we are an island. You really can't get from South Minneapolis down to amazing amenities like we have in the River Valley, our restaurants, our businesses, things like that. It would be real nice if we could facilitate some better connections. And as we talked about neighborhood commercial notes and have jumped into stuff like our Lindell Avenue retrofit, it's just really struck home that the, the biggest barrier sometimes to redevelopment is, is folks having a hard time imagining new possibilities in some of these more tired areas. So even just having this document in front of us and have some really exciting possibilities spelled out in a way that we can turn around and share with neighbors and build on the momentum and the outreach that's already been done uh, in these neighborhoods, I, I think is gonna be a pretty huge deal for me, um, as I try and build on this excitement. So just huge thank you for all the work that went into this.
So I had a question about next steps. This is Tim again. I had a question about next steps because there was, um, I, I think a slide that said that it was, we're, we're gonna wrap this up and then either approval, approval by the city councils. I'm assuming we get an opportunity, will, will we have a, will we have public hearings on this within each of our city councils? Will we get public feedback and be able then to make additional comments? And make any changes to, to the plan? Or is this, is what we're looking at tonight basically the bones of what we're gonna be voting on, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Maybe I'll start in on, on that. Well, uh, in all honesty, we still have to figure the details out of what that next step is. We've done some discussion amongst ourselves about how we will, are, the two cities will approve this. And our internal conversations in Bloomington have been that we should adopt this plan. There's always this question and there's no guidance in our code that says we have to adopt a plan like this that we, the only plan we have to adopt is, is the comp plan. The rest of our district plans or whatever else, we don't formally have to adopt them, but that has been our protocol, like we just did on the Lindell plan. In my discussions with Planning Manager Glenn Markacard, we've kind of landed on, well, let's treat this similarly and let's go through an adoption process which requires a public hearing. Because it's a higher level document. Well, maybe I will let Melissa speak to how Richfield is thinking about it. But I don't know that we've, we've completely landed on what that next step is. So that's in terms of the, the mechanics of, of approval or adoption. We're, we're not sure that we, and I don't think it, it needs to be the same process in each community. What we do and what we haven't fully figured out yet or, or discussed thoroughly is how, because we will come back to you with the final document. So the consultant is, is finalizing the document and we will come back to you to accept, adopt, or whatever, the final document. You may have some comments on that document. So the question then is how does it get changed? And, and one option would be that there's an addendum that gets approved with the final document that includes all of the input from the two cities. That's just an idea. I'm kind of talking off the top of my head here. But as I said at the outset, um, we need to think that through a little bit more. We just, and we aren't there yet. So Melissa, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Sure. Just for our city council, I'll let you know that we have talked about accepting the plan. It's fairly high level and it's some general guidance that we think we'd like to look at and then perhaps turn into policy that we would adopt. So our plan is to bring the doc, final document, document to you for acceptance and then work further from there.
This is Councilmember Supple again. Um, there was one point that hasn't been stressed that I really want to make is I really liked the plans for the open spaces and ways like to open up Roosevelt Park with the wall or Smith Park and some of those open space usages. I think that's, would be really good for this area because it tends to be a lot of cement. And so if we can get more green space and more, you know, if we've got the walkability and the bikeability, we also need the green space so people can enjoy that as they're moving through it. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Whelan here. I'll just say briefly that, um, thank you, Melissa, for saying what I was thinking about the other, the other four crossings being equally important. And potentially if, if we're in a system where it is gonna be a lot of car traffic diverted to Portland, that the places it's diverted from would be wonderful to make more, explore more of these almost like land bridge ideas and green spaces and pedestrian focuses. That, that makes a lot of sense to me. So thank you for emphasizing that.
This is Julie Farnham. I guess I would ask for some direction from the Bloomington City Council. Do you have a, a preference with regard to formal adoption of this plan or simply approval or acceptance?
Well, this is Tim. I guess my thought is that we treat it much like we treated the Lindell plan. I, I think that's, that sets a good precedent. It, it shows what we have done in the past and we're gonna try and continue to follow with that in the future. Uh, understanding that there is a, there, there's more work than ultimately then needs to be done between now and then. But I think to, to make it a more formal adoption process, again, like we used on, on the, the recent Lindell plan, makes the most sense to me. Councilmember Carter or Councilmember Martin, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that makes total sense. I am in full agreement.
Same here.
Thank you.
Well, if that's it, I don't, I don't want to rush anybody if you're still thinking about things. But otherwise, um, we can let you get back to your evening and putting people to bed.
Absolutely. Any last comments or questions from folks? Looks like there's none. A huge thank you to our staff, um, to the consulting company. And this is something that both of our communities will continue to, to adopt and use in, in the work that we're focusing on moving forward. We appreciate everyone's time tonight. And I don't know, do we each call the meeting? Do we each adjourn the meeting? Or is it fine if I just adjourn the meeting?
No, I think we each have to adjourn our own meetings and we've got a, a Stickler City Attorney where we actually have to vote to adjourn the meeting. So.
All right. Well, I will adjourn Richfield's meeting.
Bloomington, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And since there's only three of us left, uh, I, I would, I would concur. Denise, you're still with us there? Yep, I see Denise. Call it officially, Denise. Let's do this.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Hi.
Councilmember Martin?
Hi.
Mayor Bussey?
Hi, we are adjourned on a three oh vote. Very good. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate the time on this. Appreciate your effort.